Now I'll call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. We have a house full tonight, thank you all for coming out. I know there's a lot of presentations tonight, but thank all of you. I know there's a lot of family and friends here to come out in support of their loved one or friend that's receiving recognition tonight. To get started tonight, I'd like to have everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Jerry Pittner followed by our invocation. Please join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, as always, we pause to give you thanks. To give you thanks for this beautiful fall day. To give you thanks for the many blessings and benefits that you bestow upon us as the city of Jacksonville and upon us individually. We continue to remember in our prayers those that have been devastated by the hurricanes and by the wildfires in California. We pray that you would be with them during this time and this period of recovery. We give thanks and we acknowledge your presence and your protecting of this fragile coastal region in which we live. We remember tonight our servicemen and women who are serving here and around the world, many of them in harm's way. We pray for them and for their anxious families. And as always, we ask your guidance and your direction to be with our mayor and with our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Council, I'd entertain a motion now to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion on this? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Alright, we have several presentations we're gonna make tonight, and I'm gonna come around For the first recognition tonight, I'd like to have David Lynch, who is the president of Rolling Thunder, join me up front, please, David. The Department of Veterans Affairs has designated the city of Jacksonville as an official regional site for Veterans Day observances for the seventh year in a row, and Jacksonville's one of approximately 60 communities out of 31 states to have received this honor and is one of only three designated sites in North Carolina. Rolling Thunder organizes the city's Veterans, annual Veterans Day parade, which we're looking forward to on Saturday, November 4th, at 10:00 a.m. will be down Western Boulevard, starting at Coastal Carolina Community College and ending at Brenmore Shopping Center, as usual. Great parade, I encourage everyone to come out in support of the veterans that have fought so bravely for your freedom and served for your freedom in the past. Did you want to say a few words, Dave?
No, sir, just, we enjoy doing this for the city, and we, again, ask everybody to come out and see us on November 4th for the ceremony, for the parade.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, sir.
I have, I have the cast of Rolling Thunder right here, I wanna, can I have them all come up and get a photograph with them? I know it's a bit much, but... If you cast a Rolling Thunder, you like it? I like that, I like that they should print that out. We have next presentation, we have a proclamation. This is for Dyslexia Awareness Month. Ms. Donna Gargit is the president of the blank canvas of work, well, the, of the local chapter, correct? Unfortunately, she was unable to be with us tonight due to illness, but Donna, I know you're watching, so we're gonna read our proclamation for you. Whereas dyslexia is a language-based learning disability that affects approximately one in five people regardless of race, gender, age, or socioeconomic status. And whereas neurological in origin, dyslexia affects the brain, the way the brain processes information and is characterized by difficulties with reading, writing, and spelling despite normal intelligence. And whereas those with dyslexia benefit greatly from specialized assistance from highly-trained teachers, multi-sensory learning programs, and individualized instruction. And whereas early identification, alternative instruction, and extra support from friends, family, and teachers can contribute to the success dyslexic students enjoy in the classroom, in life, and later on in employment. And whereas literacy is a critical skill needed for educational success, and students unable to read at grade level by third grade are four times more likely not to graduate from high school with a diploma. And whereas decoding dyslexia, North Carolina is a grassroots movement driven by North Carolinians' concern with the limited access to educational interventions for dyslexia, and is made up of individuals and parents who are interested in sharing their experiences and bringing about change in legislation concerning the learning, this learning disability. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, Mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of October 2017 as Dyslexia Awareness Month in the city of Jacksonville, and I urge all citizens to join with me in supporting efforts to raise the dyslexia awareness. And Donna, we'll make sure that you get this proclamation. The next proclamation we have, and I'm gonna invite Adrienne James, the Minority Business Services Committee Chairwoman, and Lorette Legon, President of the Jacksonville Onslow Chamber of Commerce, along with members of the Minority Business Service community, and anyone else that you brought with you.
Legon.
I'm sorry. I see you brought Dr. Lingel out of retirement. Thank you, sir. We're gonna, we're gonna do this, I know that we do an annual recognition of minority business development, enterprise development week, business enterprise, and this is the week of October 23 through 27 that we recognize this week. And I'm gonna read this, they printed it out big for me so I don't have to put my glasses on.
But it's okay.
I think it was real nice of them to do that.
That's very sweet.
Whereas at a time when many Americans are facing extraordinary economic challenges, supporting the development of minority-owned enterprises will help accelerate the revitalization of our economy. And whereas the goal of the Chamber's Minority Business Services Division is to expand the growth of our community's small and minority-owned businesses. And whereas the city of Jacksonville celebrates Minority Enterprise Development Week and promotes an increased opportunity to commemorate the tremendous value minority entrepreneurs and their employees bring to our community, our history, and our economy. And whereas the Jacksonville Onslow Chamber of Commerce and the Chamber's Minority Business Services Committee will honor the Minority Entrepreneur of the Year and the Linda L. Richardson Minority Business Advocate of the Year. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, Mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim October 23rd through the 27th, 2017, as Minority Enterprise Development Week in the city of Jacksonville, and I urge all citizens to celebrate the importance of the minority businesses in our community. Now, who's gonna be the official spokesperson?
Your chairman.
Oh, the chairperson, okay.
Once again, we would like to thank you, Mayor Phillips, as well as our city council members. We appreciate it. It means a lot to the Business Services Committee at the Chamber of Commerce to have your support every year that we celebrate this week, and we are looking forward to next week. We have some fantastic activities coming along, we have some celebrations of some dynamic people that have made tremendous contributions to Onslow County and Jacksonville, and so we're hoping that y'all will come out and celebrate with us. You can go to the Chamber's website, they have a list of our activities next week, and again, we say thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And see y'all.
I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Angela Washington to join me up front here. We're gonna do a presentation, this is our Gold Star Award for our Clean and Green Appearance Tonight, we're gonna recognize businesses and homes which have been nominated by several citizens for outstanding visual appearances. Our first category is Outstanding Business Appearance Awards, and I invite all those associated with Biagio's Italian Coffee and Espresso Bar to come forward. Do we have anyone here?
We have.
Alright.
Mr. Aragona.
Mr. Aragona. We have got this, we'd like to present to you, Martin, this is, thank you for your investment in our downtown Jacksonville area, you have a beautiful establishment there, been there several times myself, I encourage everyone to head down that way, you know, and look at our downtown, and you've got some other projects that you're working on down there, too.
We do.
Really do appreciate your, your time and energies down there.
Thank you so much, this is beautiful. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say, you know, I wanted to, wanted to thank my wife, because in terms of decor, I just implement what she tells me to do, I don't come up with the game plan. But I also wanted to thank the, the mayor and the city council and the city manager and staff, because if, if you've looked at the city the past several years, you can notice not only down Court Street, but down New Bridge, and even Western Boulevard, and the new bypass areas, just really an investment in beautification of the city, and I think they've done a great job, so I just wanna say thank you, and it makes, you know, investing in our business much easier, and we just wanna thank you for this award, it's beautiful. Thank you so much.
And thank you, Martin, for what you do down there. Unable to attend this evening, we have, is there any representatives from Sparks Chiropractic here, located at 3220 Henderson Drive? They moved, actually moved their business across the street, and I know that they're doing some, a lot of work around there, I drive by there daily, so we'll hold on to their award till later on. Next, I'd like to, this is for residential, residential appearance award, I'd invite Deborah Kuno and Logan and Jessica Sosa to come forward if you're here, and they are Deborah Kuno's efforts at her home on West Spacial Boulevard have not gone unnoticed. Her daily attention to her yard has produced a textbook appearance of manicured lawn, edging, and landscaping, and for astute attention to her property, and with great respect from the neighbors that nominated her, she was awarded the Clean and Green Star Award for Outstanding Residential Appearance. Also nominated by neighbors who say the backyard is the real showcase of the residents. The front of Logan and Jessica Sosa's Belchase home is a magazine, is magazine quality. Now featuring seasonal items, I'll have to get by there and see that. It is a perfect showcase for well-maintained plantings and impressive facade to the home and welcoming landscape. There's a visual statement here, and it is welcome home. Great job. Our third category is the Holiday Residential Appearance Award, and I'd like to invite Elizabeth Trot to come forward. Elizabeth, there she is, yeah, I talked to her earlier, yes. Well, hey, you must've done something to trip somebody's fancy about the holidays.
There you go, ma'am, congratulations.
I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read a little something first before you go back, okay?
Oh, that is my home.
That is your home? How about that? Martin got one, Martin and Lori got one of Biagio's, they got one of their house, that's pretty neat, isn't it? Yeah. As a representative of how simple but impactful container gardening can be, and with a nod to a year-round appearance, neighbors also nominated Elizabeth Trot for an Appearance Award. The committee selected her residence as an outstanding example of early holiday decorating for the fall, with onsite recon from one of the neighbors, they, the layered approach to decorating for the season was noted. Flags, potted plants, placed ornaments of the season, and of course wreaths were noted to have made this home worthy of early recognition, it is beautiful, by the way. The contest will recognize outstanding seasonal decorations for October, November, and December, so get to work on those entries, they can be made at the city's website. Thank you so much.
I would just like to thank everyone, and this is a real honor, and it's beautiful.
Thank you. It is beautiful. The house is beautiful. We also, we all like, recognize as our businesses and residents that do an outstanding job as far as improving the appearance of Jacksonville, and I know with Biagio's downtown, which was a great leap of faith on your part, Martin and Lori, to go down there and make that investment, it really has brought a lot of character to that area down there, and to the homes, the home, the homes, and also the Sparks Chiropractic business on Henderson Drive Extension, great job, thank you so much for your part in making the city so much more beautiful than it used to be. Thank you.
Mayor, one quick note, the Parks and Recreation Department, or the Parks Division of Parks and Recreation, over the last week have taken out the landscaping on Court Street and replaced it with seasonal flowers, so I'm sure Martin and Lori have seen that, but as you go downtown over the next several days, we hope you'll take a moment to look there at the intersection of Old Bridge and Court at the medians that come down towards college, a very, very nice improvement by the city staff.
Okay, next, I have a presentation of a check, I like checks. It's usually money involved in that. I'd like to ask our Director of Public Safety, Mike Cunero, and Mr. Lester Lowe from the North Carolina Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run, and we also have some officers and Recreation and Parks people here, they're involved heavily in this. Running With the Law consists of a 5K, one mile, and virtual run, I don't know what a virtual run is, maybe, but, it was held on July 29th, 2017, as a partner event for National Night Out. This was the fifth year for the event coordinated by members of the Jacksonville Police and City of Jacksonville Recreation and Parks. Running With the Law 5K raised $6,445 to benefit the North Carolina Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run. Good job, y'all. I'm gonna let you present that big check right there.
That's a lot of money for just a mayor to be hauling around.
Please see.
I think these three did most of the work.
Okay, why don't you guys present them with that check? I'd like to see you get that through the drive through window.
That was sent to us, you present.
Oh, yeah. That's good to be to you.
Hey.
Thanks for making the trip. Did you want to say a few words?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. As a former 82nd Airborne Division, I wanna wish the Marines here a early birthday for November 10th, but proud to serve. If y'all could, you bear with me, I have some words here for my president, Keith Fishburne, President and CEO of North Carolina Special Olympics. Myself have been a member for 25 years, so it's a great honor to present this. The North Carolina Law Enforcement Torch Run and Special Olympics unite officers from law enforcement agencies and correction department across the state of North Carolina to raise funds and awareness for Special Olympics North Carolina. Each year, over 2,500 law enforcement officials dedicate their time and energy to the raised valuable funds for athletes in Onslow County and across the state. Their efforts are all the more appreciated as no athlete has ever been asked to pay or participate in Special Olympics at any level. Jacksonville Police Department has long been a strong supporter of Special Olympics North Carolina through their work with Law Enforcement Torch Run. Over the past five years, Jacksonville PD Department has raised $63,059 by participating in events such as Cops on Top, Red Robin, Tip a Cop, Run With the Law, and through general donations towards Torch Run merchandise. Because of those efforts and continuing commitment, the Jacksonville PD is mission to Special Olympics, we are presenting this state-level appreciation award.
Services Committee Chairwoman, and Lorette Legon, President of the Jacksonville Onslow Chamber of Commerce, along with members of the Minority Business Service community, and anyone else that you brought with you. Fire Chief Jonathan Pravat, and firefighter Kobe Kennedy, and driver operator William On Tuesday, May 23rd, 2017, Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services Rescue One was dispatched to a residence on the 200 block of Sybil Street for a medical emergency in which a 37-year-old woman was having trouble breathing. While responding, driver operator Pravat requested response from Engine One for additional manpower because of information from dispatch of a possible medical code. Upon arrival, Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services personnel found the patient lying on the floor. Rescue One quickly assessed that the patient was unresponsive with no pulse. Firefighter Kennedy began CPR. Driver operator Farrell applied the AED pads with assistance from Onslow County EMS personnel. He analyzed the patient and initiated defibrillation. Firefighter Kennedy and driver operator Pravat continued CPR and defibrillation until the patient regained a viable pulse. The patient was transported for continued medical care. The quick and decisive action of these first responders and telecommunications, telecommunicators is commendable. Their actions resulted in preventing a tragedy and are very worthy of this life-saving award. And at this time, I'd like to, I'm gonna present these to you. The next presentation is a John A. Sasso National Community Development Week Award, and I would like to ask Councilmember Jerome Willingham and our Community Development staff to join me up front, please. We're very pleased to announce the National Community Development Association, NCDAs, awarded the prestigious 2017 John A. Sasso National Community Development Week Award to the city of Jacksonville Community Development Division.
As Councilman Willingham mentioned, this particular award is for our efforts to promote and tell the story of what Jacksonville does in the area of community development and how your local dollars are reinvested in our community. But in order to tell that story, it's not just the community development staff. It's actually our media service team that really should be standing here. They work very hard to make sure we market it, the event. It's promoted on G10, news media, commercial, video productions, flyers, everything from making sure that our council members are present, and scripts. There's a whole lot that goes on behind the scene to market an event. And so I really want to say a special thank you to Glenn Hargit and his team, Kevin, Lisa, and Kim, because without them, we would have nothing to promote. They really produce the materials to help us tell our story. So it's definitely a team effort, and so I just want to thank them for their part.
And what were the things that you did?
Oh, the things that we did this year. Oh, my goodness. We actually were able to promote the fact that we had demolished 100 dilapidated structures in the city of Jacksonville the last five years. That was a major accomplishment. And tied in with that was the fact that we also helped another homeowner purchase a home in our downtown, which is our Downtown Housing Initiative, which up for the last several years, we've been working to revitalize downtown. So we started the revitalization with demolition and completed it with new homes. So those two events happened within the same week, and we're very proud to be able to book in those activities. So we just want to thank you all for your support, thank council for their support. One of the pictures that we're kind of excited about was that our very own mayor, Pro Tim, was in the demo... What do you call that? The excavator. I should know that. That actually took the first swing at that 100th structure. So bringing it all together, it's a team effort, and we just thank you, and we're so proud to represent the city in this way. And a special thank you to Tracy Jackson. She actually wrote the application and submitted it. So it was a lot of work pulling together all that documentation and putting the package together for a review. So I want to thank Tracy for her hard work as well.
Okay, for our final thing for tonight, as far as the presentations, we actually have a few promotions we're going to make. So I would like to ask our Director of Public Safety, Mike Canaro, to join me up front, along with Emergency Services Chief Jerry Hardison. And I'd like to ask Mike Kellum and his family, if you'll... Or anybody with you to come up. You can relax for just a second. I'm gonna read a few... I'm gonna tell them a little something about you. And then we're gonna get to the real stuff here. Mike's been promoted to Lieutenant of the Jacksonville Police Department. He's a native of Onslow County and graduated from White Oak High School in 1995. He began his law enforcement career with the Jacksonville Police Department on June 22, 2006, serving as a patrol officer until 2007, when he was selected to serve on the Community Response Team. In March of 2010, he was selected as an investigator and assigned to the Special Operations Division. In 2011, he was transferred to the Investigative Services Division and was promoted to the rank of Sergeant in 2013, serving as a supervisor of that division. Detective Kellum holds an Associate Degree from Coastal Carolina Community College, as well as the intermediate law enforcement certificate from North Carolina Training and Standards Commission. Detective Kellum is a military veteran, having served in the North Carolina National Guard, and his... Your wife and son are not here tonight. Okay. So your mom and dad are going to help you with your penning? Okay. Gotcha. All right, so I'm going to administer an oath for you, and we're going to need a... You've got the Bible, don't you? Okay. All right, so if you will, please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, like you've got there, and repeat after me. "I, Richard Michael Kellum..."
"I, Richard Michael Kellum..."
"...do hereby solemnly swear..."
"Do hereby solemnly swear..."
"...that I will be alert and vigilant..."
"That I will be alert and vigilant..."
"...in performing my duties..."
"In performing my duties..."
"...as a lieutenant..."
"As a lieutenant..."
"...of the City of Jacksonville Police Department..."
"Of the City of Jacksonville Police Department..."
"...that I will not be influenced..."
"That I will not be influenced..."
"...in any matter..."
"In any matter..."
"...on account of..."
"On account of..."
"...personal bias or prejudice..."
"Personal bias or prejudice..."
"...that I will support and maintain..."
"That I will support and maintain..."
"...the Constitution and laws of the United States..."
"Constitution and laws of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"...not inconsistent therewith..."
"Not inconsistent therewith..."
"...and that I will faithfully and impartially..."
"And that I will faithfully and impartially..."
"...discharge and execute the duties of my office..."
"Discharge and execute the duties of my office..."
"...as a lieutenant..."
"As a lieutenant..."
"...of the Jacksonville, City of Jacksonville Police Department..."
"Of the City of Jacksonville Police Department..."
"...according to the best of my skills, abilities, and judgment..."
"According to the best of my skills, ability, and judgment..."
"So help me God..."
"So help me God..."
Congratulations, Lieutenant. Man, that's a big one in. You know how to work one of those machines? Oh, good. So you want to stick it all the way through? I'm gonna pull this one off. Pull this one off. I'm gonna give you this. Now, you're gonna stick that through this collar. We're not gonna worry too much about perfection. Sam, you want to do the other side of it?
She's gonna do both.
Oh, she's gonna do both of them? Okay.
I have my glasses, bud. Perfect.
Man, that looks sharp on that blue. Congratulations. This is a good boy. Good guy. All right, so we're gonna do... All right, now I would like to invite Richard Bean and any family member he has to come Why aren't you precious? Richard Bean is being promoted to Sergeant. Richard was born in Weston, West Virginia, and graduated from Lewis County High School in 1982. He enlisted in the Marine Corps, retiring in 2006 as a Sergeant Major with 24 years of service. He had a desire to continue to serve and join the Jacksonville Police Department in 2007, graduating from basic law enforcement training at Coastal Carolina Community College later that year. And in 2012, he earned a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice from Mount Olive University. He served in the Patrol Division until his selection as detective in 2013. He is a police training officer and serves as a hostage negotiator on the tactical team. His wife Jewel and daughters Miranda and Sadie will assist in the penning ceremony tonight. But first off, we're gonna administer the oath. If you'll repeat after me, Richard. "I, Richard Bean..."
"I, Richard Bean..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will be alert and vigilant..."
"That I will be alert and vigilant..."
"...in performing my duties..."
"In performing my duties..."
"...as a Sergeant with the Jacksonville Police Department..."
"As a Sergeant with the Jacksonville Police Department..."
"...that I will not be influenced..."
"That I will not be influenced..."
"...in any matter on account of..."
"In any manner on account of..."
"...personal bias or prejudice..."
"Personal bias or prejudice..."
"...and that I will support and maintain..."
"I will support and maintain..."
"...the Constitution and laws of the United States..."
"The Constitution and the laws of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"The Constitution and the laws of North Carolina..."
"...not inconsistent therewith..."
"Not inconsistent therewith..."
"...and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge..."
"I will faithfully and impartially discharge..."
"...and execute the duties of my office..."
"And execute the duties of my office..."
"...as a Sergeant of the City of Jacksonville Police Department..."
"As a Sergeant of the City of Jacksonville Police Department..."
"...according to the best of my skills..."
"According to the best of my skills..."
"...abilities and judgment..."
"Abilities and judgment..."
"So help me God..."
"So help me God..."
Congratulations. All right, girls, now's the time to exact your revenge on Dad. Do you need a footstool? Next, I'd like to call up Randy Jones and any family that he has present with him to Randy's been promoted to Deputy Fire Marshal. Randy graduated from South Lenore High School in June of 1991, and he has over 20 years of experience in the fire service in both volunteer and career capacities. He began his work with the Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services in January 2012 as a fire inspector and was promoted to Assistant Fire Marshal in 2013. Randy holds an Associate Degree in Emergency Medical Science from Lenore Community College, and he holds a wide variety of state and national fire certifications. He and his wife Donna have been married for 15 years, and they are parents of Emmanuel, who is 12 years old. So we are going to administer the oath to you. If you would... If you'd please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Randy Jones..."
"I, Randy Jones..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will be alert and vigilant..."
"That I will be alert and vigilant..."
"...in performing my duties..."
"In performing my duties..."
"...as a Deputy Fire Marshal..."
"As a Deputy Fire Marshal..."
"...of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services..."
"Of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services..."
"...and that I will not be influenced in any matter..."
"That I will not be influenced in any matter..."
"...on account of personal bias or prejudice..."
"On account of personal bias or prejudice..."
"...that I will support and maintain..."
"That I will support and maintain..."
"...the Constitution and laws of the United States..."
"The Constitution and laws of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"...not inconsistent therewith..."
"Not inconsistent therewith..."
"...and that I will faithfully and impartially..."
"That I will faithfully and impartially..."
"...discharge and execute the duties of my office..."
"Discharge and execute the duties of my office..."
"...as a Deputy Fire Marshal..."
"As a Deputy Fire Marshal..."
"...of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services..."
"Of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services..."
"...according to the best of my abilities..."
"According to the best of my abilities..."
"Skills and judgment..."
"Skills and judgment..."
"So help me God..."
"So help me God..."
Congratulations, Randy. There's a nice badge. How many horns you got? Good job. Thank you. Congratulations. Next, I would like to invite up Jerry Pennington and any family member present. I know you've got several here to stand with you. Jerry is being promoted to Assistant Battalion Chief. Jerry was raised in Jacksonville, graduating from Jacksonville High School in 1983. He has almost 25 years of service with the City of Jacksonville, beginning in 1992 with the city's street department before joining the fire department in 1995. Jerry has ascended through the ranks from firefighter one to Assistant Battalion Chief. He holds an Associate Degree in Applied Science in Fire Protection Technology and holds a wide variety of state and national fire certifications. He is a graduate of the North Carolina Fire Chiefs Chief Fire Officer Executive Development Program and the International Association of Chiefs of Police Leadership and Public Safety Organizations Program. That's a big one there. He is... He and his wife, 30 years... Catherine are the parents of two sons, Alex and Kyle. And at this time, I would take great pleasure to administer the oath to you, Jerry, and if you would please repeat after me. "I, Jerry Pennington..."
"I, Jerry Pennington..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will be alert and vigilant..."
"That I will be alert and vigilant..."
"...in performing my duties..."
"In performing my duties..."
"...as an Assistant Battalion Chief..."
"As an Assistant Battalion Chief..."
"...of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services..."
"Of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services..."
"...that I will not be influenced..."
"That I will not be influenced..."
"...in any matter on account of personal bias or prejudice..."
"In any matter on account of personal bias or prejudice..."
"...that I will support and maintain..."
"I will support and maintain..."
"...the Constitution and laws of the United States..."
"Constitution and laws of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"Constitution and laws of North Carolina..."
"...not inconsistent therewith..."
"Not inconsistent therewith..."
"...and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge..."
"That I will faithfully and impartially discharge..."
"...and execute the duties of my office..."
"And execute the duties of my office..."
"...as an Assistant Battalion Chief..."
"As an Assistant Battalion Chief..."
"...of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services..."
"Of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services..."
"...according to the best of my skills..."
"According to the best of my skills..."
"...abilities and judgment..."
"Abilities and judgment..."
"So help me God..."
"So help me God..."
Congratulations. Do you have an EMT?
Yes.
Okay, good. That's good. Just in case. I have a little slipper. Slip is there. Yeah, it's just like getting a shot at the doctor's office, isn't it? You're not wearing a vest either, like the other guys. You actually did better on the oath than I did, and I was reading. You actually did better on the oath than I did, and I was reading. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We reached our first section of public comment for tonight's meeting, and I don't have anyone signed up, but if anybody came in after the list was taken up, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand up high. Okay, I don't see anyone, so we're going to go ahead and, let's take a few minutes, because I've got a lot of people standing back there. Let's go ahead and take a real short recess here. I'm going to let everybody that wants to leave, leave, so you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You're more than welcome to stay, okay?
Come on, can I use the restroom?
Yes, sir, take your time.
Hey, young lady, how are you?
I'm doing okay. How are you?